Area recognized soccer coach for his school out there.
Yep.
Not just for his school, for the area.
Yes, really?
Nope, they got some more people coming, hang on. What does your former husband do now?
He is working-
Did he finish his education and stuff?
He did not. He did not.
I know that's where you kind of were supporting him.
Yeah, he's, I think, still two classes away from finishing his degree, but he's, uh, working at Concord Pool.
I'd say that's because I had to go out to something out there. And I thought that's where it was located.
He's really enjoying it, so.
Okay. Does he live out that direction then?
No, he lives right in Goose Hill.
Oh, does he?
Yeah.
That's your eye.
Yeah.
I will stab myself in the eye.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Kinsella. I'm here serving as the moderator for this evening's candidate forum for the Schenectady City School District Board of Education. I'm acting on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Schenectady County, which is a nonpartisan organization. We put an emphasis on voting, and we do not endorse candidates or political parties for any political races. This evening, we will give you an opportunity to gather information about the candidates for the Schenectady City School District Board of Education to help you make voting decisions. All of the candidates who will be on the ballot on May 17th have been invited to tonight's forum, and they have all accepted the invitation. Welcome. These candidates are serving our community and participating in the democratic process by their willingness to run for office. We do have a few ground rules. First, we ask that no campaign signs, buttons, or literature be distributed in this room. There is a table for campaign literature outside of the room, I think. Is there one, Ann? If there's not, we'll make sure that it's available, but none may be distributed inside the room. There is also information about the League of Women Voters. Please take a look. We also, please silence your cell phones for the duration of the forum. No video or audio recording or pictures are allowed. This event is being livestreamed by the school district and can be viewed on the school district's website at a later date. And I understand it could be later today, possibly. You're welcome to submit written questions on the cards that are being distributed. If you need another card or need more cards, please raise your hand, and our ushers will provide you with the necessary card and a pen, if you need one, to complete a question. The questions should be suitable for all of the candidates to answer. Please hold up your cards, and an usher will pick them up throughout the forum if you have any questions come to mind. Questions will be screened, and questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Questions that fall in the same general area may be consolidated, so we don't repeat the same question multiple times. And there is often not enough time to cover all of the issues, so forgive us for that if we are not able to answer every question that is presented to us. However, please feel free to contact the candidates directly for more information about their position on issues or any questions you may have. Candidates will have a two-minute opening statement, one minute to answer each question, which I will present to them. We're going to have the opening statements in alphabetical order to get us started. And then the questions will be asked of each of the candidates in different orders, so that it's not always the same person or persons answering the questions initially. We have timers who will hold up a yellow card when there are 30 seconds left and a red card when it is time for the candidates to stop speaking. During the questioning time of the forum, the order of candidates will be varied, as I said. And after each statement or question, please hold your applause until all of the candidates have spoken. That way, we will maximize the amount of time that the candidates can share information and answer your questions, rather than taking time for each candidate to receive applause. I'm sure you'll be fine with that. So, what we're going to do now is ask the candidates in alphabetical order to make a two-minute, no more than two-minute, opening statement. So, what I would like to do is introduce the candidates and then ask Ms. Holler to begin. In alphabetical order, once again, first candidate is Kristen Holler. The second is Kathy Lewis. The third down the row here is Vivian Parsons. And the fourth is Emily Willie, Willie, excuse me, Willie Ollit. Ms. Holler.
Thank you. So, my name is Kristen Holler. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Schenectady and a parent of two current district students who are in the elementary school. I earned my bachelor's degree in human and community services administration with a focus on human resources development and organizational learning. I've worked in Schenectady and capital region area nonprofits in leadership roles for the past 15-plus years, including eight and a half years as executive director of Albany Barn and Electric City Barn, which is located in the Hamilton Hill neighborhood and focuses on workforce development through the creative arts and creative industries. I'm also an active volunteer in the community. I've served on the board of Rosa Vennerini Early Childhood Center. I'm an active member of my neighborhood association. I coach Little League here in the city. And I've worked in the schools, both as a teaching artist and in the Student Work Experience Program, and have had some experience coordinating programs with different schools throughout the district. I'm looking at this as an opportunity to get more deeply involved in issues that affect our community. And I fully believe that investing in our students and in our education system is the best way to retain great people here in the city of Schenectady and for us to thrive in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I am Kathy Lewis. Twelve years ago, the district was mired in at least two scandals when I took office. The prior superintendent was gone. The district had strengths, but we were underfunded by $52 million a year by the state's own minimum formula, and our property tax levy was a deterrent to families who might otherwise move in Schenectady. My board colleagues elected me president starting in my first term and re-elected me for a total of seven straight years. Our student body has become very diverse, but the district did not seem to have any systematic plan to deal with a low graduation rate and the inequalities of opportunity with respect to race and social class. Our board adopted an ambitious goal: Everybody counts, everybody learns. I back that fully and always will. We have made progress, and as Schenectady has had a renaissance, we have been able to reduce the property tax levy for five straight years. Along with COVID's problems, we had two big, helpful changes. Last year, right before I started my eighth year as board president, I was thrilled to be able to speak at the press conference announcing Anibal Salair Jr. as the permanent superintendent. He quickly assembled a diverse and highly qualified staff reporting to him and in other key positions. And the state has promised to give a substantial boost in our money. The board and superintendent have already outlined 11 key initiatives with money to fund them to help get us to what our students and community need. I was elected to the New York State School Boards Association and co-chair that group's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. I want to continue to work with anyone who will work with me, as I always have, on the board and in the community to continue the progress we have made.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons.
My name is Vivian Parsons. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Schenectady. I am a single mother of three wonderful, beautiful children, one of which has graduated from the district last year, and the other one is a student currently in an elementary, Willan Elementary School. Currently, I serve as the Director of Admissions for an assisted living facility. So, this is a position I pride myself in because I am assisting those in our most vulnerable population, really determining what their needs are and trying to help them find a new home for them, you know, a new home for them and giving their families the resources available that they need in transitioning in such a difficult time. So, the reason that I am running for school board is because I want to take the passion that I have for helping those that are disadvantaged in our community and also the passion I've had for advocating for our own children and their educational needs. And I want to help apply that and help fight for all of our children in this district and making sure that all of our children have exactly what they need. My youngest is a child with learning disabilities and special needs. So, I have firsthand experience in identifying his needs and advocating that he receives the assistance that he needs. And that is something that I'm very passionate about, and I want to help all of our children receive the same support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Willie Ollit, please.
Hello, hi. My name is Emily, and I have been living in Schenectady since I was a little kid. And I'm a mother, aunt, community leader, mentor, and godmother and foster mother to many children in the district. So, when I say all the children in this district are mine, I mean it. It's not just a script, it's something that I truly believe. So, I've been working in the community for over a decade now, and I've been listening to the needs that the community identifies within themselves of what they need and what they want. And the biggest voice that I have heard is that their voices are not valued and they don't matter in this district, but they trust me and they believe in me to help their voices be heard. So, every time I'm giving out backpacks and I'm asking the kids, "What do they want to be when they grow up?" And I'm working with the families to make sure that the next year, they don't need to come and get new backpacks because they're able to do that for themselves now. I'm still following up with these kids from the time they're kindergarten and excited to the time they're seniors, and they just want to be done with it already. I would say that the main reason I decided to put in my run for school board at this time was because, as a coach with Girls on the Run at Girls Inc., I am working with these girls two to four days a week. And all I hear from them is, "Coach, nobody listens to us." And whether it has to do with something about needing more crossing guards and transportation so they can feel safe in school or whether it's they had some bullying issues and maybe administration didn't hear them, I'm here so that I can continue to be a voice to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, for our first question, it is as follows, and I will repeat the question for each of the panelists, okay? What do you feel needs to be done to increase the graduation rate among our students? And we'll start at the end of the table, if we could, please. Ms. Willie Ollit, if you would begin with your response.
I believe graduation rate will increase when we have the whole family participating in the school process as a team with the school again. And in order to do that, the community needs to feel that there's somebody representing them and their voice properly on the board so that they can build the trust again within the school district. Thank you.
Ms. Holler? The question is, what do you feel needs to be done to increase the graduation rate among our students?
I believe that we need to have early intervention and consistent supports for students throughout their learning career. I believe that we need to engage families in their students' education, and we need to try different methods to do that so that we're reaching out to all families in different economic situations, people who are not native English language speakers. And we need to make sure that parents, there's no more trusting relationship than sending your kid into a school every day. So, we need to make sure that parents have access to be able to communicate about their children's needs and that they're all excited about the opportunities that their children will have here in Schenectady.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons? The question is, once again, what do you feel needs to be done to increase the graduation rate among our students?
So, I personally believe that attendance is key. I also believe that we need to go back to providing an emphasis on health and safety in all of our schools within the district. We also need to make sure that we are providing a curriculum that our children can be excited about. I firmly believe that there needs to be an increased emphasis on behavioral and mental health services provided within the schools and also assisting our students with giving them or assisting them with coping mechanisms for when they're coming in with a bad day. We don't know what our babies are coming to school with, what they are being burdened with. And I really feel it is our duty to assist them in every way possible and approach this from a multiple-faceted approach and not just one or two different directions.
And Ms. Lewis, the question, once again, what is your opinion on the job performance of the current, excuse me, I'm on the wrong question. What do you feel needs to be done to increase the graduation rate among our students?
I feel that one of the directions we're taking is to look at secondary education and to try to engage students more in their own pathways to graduation, looking at career and technical education in a bigger way, more important way. That's not to say that we're eliminating anything with regard to our international baccalaureate program or any of our other academic programs, but we want to enhance the opportunities for students to engage in a more direct way and choose their own pathway. So, that's one of the things that we are currently looking at. Intervention, as mentioned earlier in their years, is also critical to getting them to this point.
Thank you. Next question is for Ms. Parsons, if you would begin with this, for this, please. What is your opinion on the job performance of the current superintendent?
So, speaking as a parent and having my children go through the Schenectady school systems under previous leadership, there is a significant difference between previous leadership and current leadership. I fully support the job that our current superintendent is doing to try and push our district towards diversity, equity, and inclusion, properly identifying issues that are plaguing our children, and then pushing us in a direction to address each issue accordingly. I believe that he definitely deserves our full support so we can see this district really being pushed towards a great potential that we really have. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go with the next, Ms. Willie Ollit. The question, once again, is what is your opinion on the job performance of the current superintendent?
I look forward to working with him on the board.
Excuse me, Ms. Holler? Would you like to respond to the question? What is your opinion of the job performance of the current superintendent?
I believe that our current superintendent has faced challenges that nobody probably anticipated and that nobody had a clear plan to get out of. I have really enjoyed the increase in communications and consistency of communications that have come home. Again, speaking as a parent, I think there's some additional work to be done there in diversifying the means of communication, but certainly that attempt to reach the parent community is felt. And I also like the attention to the building level needs and giving building leaders and principals say in what needs to happen within their own specific learning community. Thank you.
And Ms. Lewis, again, the question is, what is your opinion on the job performance of the current superintendent?
I am excited by Mr. Salair's approach to education and his accomplishments in the first nine months, basically. He's been here only since July. We have, as I mentioned, 11 initiatives, looking at the secondary school approach, relaunching My Brother's Keeper, reorganization of the district office, and the services being offered. These are some of the points that he has undertaken in a very fast way. And so, I'm highly excited about his being here and continue to hope to support him in his efforts.
Thank you. The next question is, have you received the support and/or endorsement of any individual currently sitting on the Schenectady City School District Board of Education? Let's begin with Ms. Parsons, please.
No, I have not.
Okay. Next, Ms. Holler?
I believe several current school board members did sign my petition to join the school board, and I have had support from a sitting school board member in just figuring out the logistics of how to get the word out about my candidacy.
Ms. Lewis?
I had, all the board members did sign the night the petitions came out for me, and that's it.
Okay. And Ms. Willie Ollit, the question, once again, is have you received the support and/or endorsement of any individual currently sitting on the Schenectady City School District Board of Education?
I do have support from members on the school board. Thank you.
Okay. If you could, each person speak into your microphones. I'm not sure everyone is able to hear, fully hear, your responses, so please speak directly into your microphones, if you would, please. Okay. The next question I'm going to ask, well, the next question is, do you support community engagement officers in Schenectady schools? Why or why not? And I'd like to begin with Ms. Lewis.
Yes, I voted for supporting the community engagement officers in Schenectady schools for the very reason that it was pointed out by the superintendent that Schenectady was the only school district in capital region BOCES that had no safety officers. And it was felt that it was necessary. We needed to change the dynamics in the school, and this is what we're approaching. I know that it's controversial. I know that there are different feelings about it among different groups of people, but there are statistics that show it is effective in some areas, and particularly when the students get to know the officers.
Ms. Willie Ollit, the question, once again, is do you support community engagement officers in Schenectady schools, and why or why not?
As the program and contract is currently written, no, I do not support the program. But I do think that there's plenty of room for both sides of the table to get together and find common grounds so that it can work for everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Parsons, again, the question is, do you support community engagement officers in Schenectady schools? Why or why not?
I do fully support community engagement officers in our school. It is no secret that there have been issues of violence and other behaviors within the high school for a very long time that has been long unaddressed. I do support there being the law enforcement presence in the school, but the way that the program is written, I also support that. I know that there has been opposition for that program, and I know that there have been many points made demanding that social work and mental health services be provided instead of the community engagement officers. But if you look at the way that the budget is written, those services are being added to the budget in addition to community engagement officers. Our faculty, they need to have the support to back the expectations upon them to provide a safe and living environment for our children to learn in. Thank you.
And, excuse me, Ms. Holler, once again, the question is, do you support community engagement officers in Schenectady schools? Why or why not?
I think there are certainly applications where having community engagement officers in schools is effective. I did not support the current expansion of the program. I feel, coming off of two years of our learning environments being drastically altered and children having adverse learning and social-emotional impacts from COVID, while we also reduced many positions in the district, I would have liked to have seen the number of those counseling and mental health professionals resumed and the program to continue at its current level before an expansion was fully committed to over multiple years.
Thank you. The next question is, how will you go about deciding where funds go? And I'd like to begin now with Ms. Parsons. Once again, you've got the question. How will you go about deciding where funds go?
Really, I would be working with every single board member as a solid collective unit and figure in determining what is best for all of our students and our faculty in this district. Really trying to approach everything from a bird's eye view is key here. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Willie Ollit, the question is, how will you go about deciding where funds go?
Obviously, in collaboration with the rest of the board, all of our different experiences, whether it be on the board, lived experiences, educational experiences, together, also from a bird's eye view, would figure out where all the funds should be spent. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, how will you go about deciding where funds go?
We've tried different approaches in terms of that, but what it basically comes down to is we've gotten community input through circles in past years, and this year, we had some surveys. We've also approached it with asking the principals and the other people what staffing needs they have. Their wish list is basically what it's been referred to for each of the schools and see what we can find, see what we can do. What they call an equity index was created a few years ago, and we aren't using that per se, but that's essentially what we're trying to do, is bring about equity within each of our schools. And this is the approach that we're taking in trying to establish the budget.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Holler, the question, once again, how will you go about deciding where funds will go?
So, I do think it's important to prioritize equitable spending across all of our levels of education and all of our school buildings. I believe that the principals and teachers in each of our schools are the subject matter experts in what their individual schools need. And so, I would expect, you know, for a lot of that information to flow through to the superintendent and then to the board. I also believe we need to look at Schenectady as the larger community and anticipate some needs that may funnel into the school with services that come and go in availability to our students outside of the school environment. Thank you.
Okay. Next question, what limits do you think should exist when it comes to the relationship a school board member has with students? For example, is encouraging political activism appropriate? Let's begin with Ms. Parsons, do you want to begin? Would you like me to repeat the question?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure, of course. What limits do you think should exist when it comes to the relationship a school board member has with students? For example, is encouraging political activism appropriate?
To be honest, no. I do not feel that encouraging political activism during school hours and entering the school day is appropriate. I believe that things need to be separate from a place of position of authority and making sure that, again, we are advocating for all of the needs of all of our students in this district and working collaboratively with every school board member in order to get that done. So, am I discouraging our students' right to have their voices heard? Absolutely not. But there is a way to go about properly encouraging it while keeping everything properly separate while in that role.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, what limits do you think should exist when it comes to the relationship a school board member has with students?
The board operates as a whole. None of us has individual authority. We're one of seven, and that's important to keep in mind. The role of the board is pretty much threefold, fourfold, depending on how you count it. It's to hire the superintendent and evaluate the superintendent. It's to determine budget resources and financial resources, and it's to establish policies. We listen to people, and we advocate for them, advocacy being primarily from the financial standpoint. But those are the roles of board members, and those are important to undertake. We're encouraging children. We want children to be in school and not outside of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Holler?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure, of course. I'm sorry, I should have done that in the first place. What limits do you think should exist when it comes to the relationship a school board member has with students?
I think anytime that you are in a position of authority, you have to be mindful of the intentional or unintentional implications of that authority and how impressionable, you know, even without intention, you can be on another person. That being said, I think if, as a school board member, a student approached and was interested in activism, I think there are channels through the school where they could explore that, including with a government or a history teacher or somebody who is charged with teaching our children about civic engagement.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Willie Ollit, once again, the question is, what limits do you think should exist when it comes to the relationship a school board member has with students?
I don't really think, considering the fact that most of us are parents of children in the school district and mentors to children in the school district and related in some way to children in the school district, that we should talk about the connections that each of us have with those children. I think that we have a responsibility during our school board hours to fulfill our duty and work with the school board together as a team. One team, one family, so Schenectady can thrive together. And the second part of that question, I'm not willing to answer. Thank you.
The next question is, how do you feel about borrowing certain books from the library? And I'd ask, Ms. Holler, would you like to begin, please?
I think borrowing certain books from the library creates a very slippery slope, particularly when the argument is made that it's for the protection of certain groups of children, when maybe the content could potentially reflect another student. We have a very diverse student population here, and I think it's really important that the literature that's available to them, you know, be able to be as diverse and to help them expand their own thinking and challenging their thoughts. And the role of educators is to help students think critically about the content that they're consuming and to make their own decisions based on what they're reading.
Ms. Lewis, again, the question is, how do you feel about borrowing certain books from the library?
I would be strongly against borrowing any books from the library. We've done a curriculum review, that was one of the things accomplished in the last six months. I shouldn't say curriculum, a review of all the curriculum. There's been a section done primarily on English, and we know where we have deficiencies and where we need to improve that. As pointed out, we have a very diverse population. My work with the NISBA DEI Committee has shown me multiple books and things that, you know, it's been a real education, and that's what I want for our young people to be able to evaluate that and live within their history.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons, the question once again is, how do you feel about borrowing certain books from the library?
I firmly believe that it really circles back to the need for parental involvement and the district's respect for parental authority over what material that their children are exposed to. So if a parent were to bring concerns to the school board, it is our responsibility to respect their viewpoint and not just immediately dismiss those concerns. So I believe that everything needs to be handled on a case-by-case basis. Should we just unilaterally ban books from the library? Absolutely not. But should we also unilaterally ignore a parent's concern about material in the library? Absolutely not.
Thank you. And Ms. Willie Ollit, please. The question once again is, how do you feel about borrowing certain books from the library?
I don't believe in banning books. I'm literally a community librarian, so getting in the way of any child reading and becoming more educated, I can't agree with that in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone has any more questions, if you could bring them or let someone know, raise your hand, we'll collect those and make sure we try to ask them. My final question is, what do you feel is the most pressing issue facing the school district? And I ask Ms. Lewis to begin.
I think the most pressing issue facing the school district is really increasing children's engagement, young people's engagement, and getting them into adequate graduation rates, deciding on career paths, having the options for those paths, whether they pursue college or career in technical education, military, whatever. I think this is what's critical for our school district, and I believe we need to do that in a DEI, equity-inclusive manner. We need to have more people of color and similar background to the demographics of our young people.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons, the question once again is, what do you feel is the most pressing issue facing the school district?
I would most certainly say the current graduation rate being as low as it is, and I also feel that we are responsible for providing our children with the tools they need to be empowered over the certain barriers that they may be facing. One particular barrier that I feel we need to address more is social and economic disadvantages that many of our children are coming from, and I believe that one of the things that we are responsible and that we owe them is providing them with, I would love to see financial literacy classes being offered even at the middle school level for our children. That, for me, is true empowerment, one example of true empowerment for our students.
Ms. Willie Ollit, the question once again is, what do you feel is the most pressing issue facing the school district?
I think the most pressing issue we have right now is our staff in all of the buildings, teachers and students all feeling supported. So we need to make sure we're moving forward in a community-school model where we're addressing the needs of the community so that our schools truly become somewhere where the community comes so they can change the cycle of what they're used to and whatever they are coming to the table with. And that way, we have smaller ratios in the classroom so that our teachers can engage with our students better. Once our students are engaging more, again, our families are going to start trusting the schools more, and then they're going to engage more. Thank you.
And Ms. Holler, the question once again is, what do you feel is the most pressing issue facing the school district?
Without a doubt, it's poverty. More than 70% of our student population is considered economically disadvantaged, and so many of the other things that we're talking about up here this evening all stem from that. I think parent engagement and having an environment in the schools where parents feel like their voices are being heard and the families' needs are being holistically met, and that those services and supports are developmentally appropriate at all stages of your student's academic career will go a long way into improving both school safety and the school environment as well as our graduation rates.
Thank you. We have a couple more questions from the audience, thank you for that. One of the questions here is, what is your view on critical race theory? Are you endorsed by any groups that oppose CRT? And we'll start, why don't we begin with Ms. Willie Ollit this time?
In my opinion, critical race theory is a joke. To ignore historical facts and not educate everybody on historical facts is very ignorant and very dangerous for a school district to do, and I refuse to answer the second part of that question due to political bait.
Ms. Parsons, the question is, what is your view on critical race theory? Are you endorsed by any groups that oppose CRT?
So I am completely opposed to critical race theory. There is a great push on, like, toxicity in the classroom and teaching children that they are inherently and born as a racist and dividing our children into classes of either oppressed or oppressor, and it is not based in true historical fact and really getting to the root of the issues that our country has faced historically in the past and the moves that our country has made since then to really move us away from the blot on our history. And as far as the second part of that question, no, I apologize, but I will not answer that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lewis, again, the question is, what is your view on critical race theory? Are you endorsed by any groups that oppose CRT?
As the, one of the co-chairs for NISBA, as I said, of the DEI Committee, I am absolutely adamant that we do not teach in New York State critical race theory. Critical race theory was a legal theory developed in the 80s, and it is not applicable and should not be taught in our schools, and it is not taught in our schools. We don't even want to go there. I think we develop and want to train in critical thinking, that's the important thing. We need to have young people understand their history and look at their history, and that's what's relevant in this. I have not been endorsed or whatever by anybody opposed to critical race theory.
Okay. And Ms. Holler, the question once again is, what is your view of critical race theory? And are you endorsed by any groups that oppose CRT?
I believe that there is, that this is an issue that's being used to be inflammatory where it doesn't need to, because what we really want to talk about is, do we want to teach our students how to view their own cultural practices with some humility and relativism and respect for the fact that their lived experience is very valid, but so are the lived experiences of others, and that we're teaching our children to evaluate information critically, to consider the sources of information that they're being provided, but also to operate in a way where they are acting with empathy and through an equity lens about how their interactions and their status in their community may impact others.
Thank you. Question from the audience, it's concerning purchasing the Elmer Avenue School back, repurchasing it, either because it's centrally located and would develop neighborhood bonds, your views on that recommendation? Let's begin with Ms. Willie Ollit, please.
I believe it should be open for discussion with the board.
Ms. Parsons, the question again, should the Elmer Avenue School be repurchased because it's centrally located and helps to develop neighborhood bonds, is the question.
I would like to see exactly what the proposal is, the purpose for that school, and making sure that every student attending that school has all resources made available to them, to include staff and everything else. But again, that would be a decision that would have to be reviewed with the board.
Ms. Lewis?
The school is empty now, and we're under contract. It's been extended several times for a developer to purchase the school. The school needs a great deal of maintenance. It has water problems, and this is one of the reasons that we've looked at selling it and having a developer develop it. So many of our schools in past years, I'm not familiar with them all, Woodlawn, the old Woodlawn School was one that was sold and so on, many of them have been. So that's something that would happen with board decision and so on.
And Ms. Holler?
As someone who has undergone two construction projects to massively redevelop historic school buildings, I know intimately the challenges, both those that are glaringly obvious and those that can lie under the surface when you start peeling apart walls. So while I do think it is important to look at whether or not the children who would have been served by that school are still being served equitably in other buildings, I don't, based on my knowledge of the current study of that building, I don't know as though it's the highest and best use of district funds to reopen that building at this time.
Thank you. That completes the questions that I have in front of me. So to conclude our program this evening, each of the candidates will have a two-minute closing statement that they can offer, and we'll go in the opposite order from where we started, and we'll start with Ms. Willie Ollit, please.
Can I go? All right. I just want to thank everybody for coming and participating in this process to get to know us a little bit better. I want to reiterate why I'm running. I'm running because many of the students and families in our district don't feel like they are valued or that they are mattering to anybody who is in these buildings, from low levels of teachers all the way up to the school board. My lived experience as being a resident in this community my entire life give me that knowledge that I need to be successful with the rest of the team on the school board to serve our community and continue to be the voice and make those connections. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Parsons?
Again, I would love to thank every one of you for taking your time out to come and listen to each of us this evening. I will say that again, I am running because I genuinely just want to help and do what is best for our children in this district. I firmly believe that we really need to move away from the polarization and the politicization of certain issues on the school board and really just get back to focusing on what is best for our children and approaching each and every issue from that base. And nothing else personal, no politics, let's just get back to the basics and focus on what's best for our children. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Every child counts, every child learns, and I, as I said, believe firmly in that statement. And I think that through my efforts with the nonprofit organizations, Girl Scouts, the YWCA, the Working Group on Girls, the SAFE and Hometown Health and Habitat for Humanity, all of these organizations, I've been able to listen to people in the community and listen to the needs of the community and hopefully can extend that, that listening to our community again, continue to attend. I believe it's important to see and be out there, and I believe that that's what I can bring to this board and can contribute, once again.
And Ms. Holler?
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I couldn't agree more that we need to bring the focus of this Board of Education back to what's best for our students, how we most equitably serve all of the students in our district, and how we adequately support the teachers and staff that make our buildings schools. Otherwise, they're just buildings. I was raised in a family full of teachers, public educators, I'm a proud product of public education, a proud product of Schenectady, somebody who came back to the area after college, purchased my home in the city, and has done everything I can to make it better. I jump in, I'm solution-oriented, I can get things done, and I can do it building consensus, and I can do it with humility, and I think we really need that. We need a level set of everybody here really focused on what is Schenectady's future and how do these kids know that they play a vital role in it? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all four of the candidates this evening for being here, for sharing their views and thoughts and their enthusiasm for the work that they're very interested in doing. And I want to thank the audience for coming and for your questions, and we will conclude with just a reminder that the election for school board candidates and the vote on the budget, on the budget also, will be held on Tuesday, May 17. Polls will be open from noon to 9:00 p.m. If you're not sure where to vote, call the Schenectady City School District Clerk of the Board. I'll give you the number, it's 518-370-8100, extension 40105. I'll repeat that if you need it, raise your hand if you do. The clerk of the board can also give you information on submitting an absentee ballot. So I want to take a moment to thank you all for coming, thank you for your participation and your interest in the activities and the future of the Schenectady City School District.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1793.14][1793.14][applause]